All right. It's a little after seven, so we'll call to order the regular session of the City of Kalamazoo Plan and Commission on Thursday, October 3rd. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Chambers.
Here.
Curtis.
Here.
Alvin Vaughn.
Sento.
Here.
Milliken.
Here.
Tako.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Swan.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Nice to have so many here's. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we received an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Um, yes, the public hearing for the special use request.
The residence at 214 Woodward Avenue has been, uh, the applicant withdrew the application earlier this week.
Okay, so we will not have a public hearing this evening. Uh, seeing no other changes, uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Swan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Patako, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, great. We also received minutes of our last meeting, the regular meeting held on July 8th. Are there any changes, comments, questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Swan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chambers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Any communications and announcements?
There are no communications or announcements, so while I do have one, there will be a special request at, um, in the November meeting.
Special request at the November meeting, okay.
Special use permit request.
So we're, we have no public hearings anymore on the agenda, no discussion action items, so move right to city planner report.
Um, city planner Christina Anderson will give a update on Imagine Kalamazoo 2035.
Hi, everybody. Bring this up here in case we, uh, start to lose power. I am super excited tonight that it worked out that we did not have a case because I wanted to, uh, present, uh, Imagine Kalamazoo 2035, um, which we officially kicked off, uh, last month. Um, and what I have for you tonight is a, uh, what I'm gonna do is a quick overview of what it is, where we're going, uh, what does the process look like, and then we're gonna do something that we've never done before at Plan Commission, um, is that we are going to turn it over to Commissioner Curtis, who's gonna run this board through an exercise, an exercise that we're asking the community to do, an exercise that we have done with our Imagine Kalamazoo Partners Group, um, and, um, it'll serve a couple purposes for us. One, this will be a fantastic demonstration of how a meeting on the go discussion works. Again, this is something that we are, this activity is something we are pushing out and asking everyone to do, or as many people as possible, so this will be a good demonstration of that. Two, it's an opportunity for you to, um, participate and see what it, um, see how it, how it works and ask questions and those kind of things. So, Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. So some of you were around when we did this engagement process, which we kicked off back in 2015, and it was called Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. So what is that? That's the name that we have called our engagement process. Um, and so we did run back, starting in 2015, to take us about 10 years into the future. That's why it's called Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. We are nearing the end of the life of the plans and the policies and such that came out of that, and so we are restarting that process. And as it relates to this board particularly, you know, one of the documents that comes out of this is the master plan, which you guys are the keeper, the master plan is the Plan Commission, um, and, um, so when it comes time to approve the master plan, this is the body that does it. The master plan is that land use and transportation plan of which the zoning code then, um, implements. So that's the, that's the tie there. The state says that zoning code should only last about 10 years, and so our current master plan technically expires October of 2027, so we padded ourselves, we got a little bit of time, we expect to wrap up, um, this engagement process and have a new master plan hopefully by early 2026. So let's talk a little bit about, um, what we're doing this time. So we have a lot of lessons learned from both the engagement process that we did in 2025, or Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, as well as the documents, how they were written, how they set us up for success. Um, the strategic vision, which is that 30,000 foot up document, 10 broad goals, um, master plan, kind of next level down, 10,000 feet, that land use transportation zoning plan. We, um, tried to set ourselves up very methodically when we did it the first time, but when we started to get into practice, we found that perhaps we hadn't written some of the, uh, we didn't define things as well as they needed to be defined. The really important chapter of the master plan, Imagine Kalamazoo at work, was good, but it had some, um, very lofty goals that required a lot of pre-steps to get to, which we then needed to think about how we accomplish those pre-steps. And so these are some of the things that, uh, have made us think a little bit differently about how we organize ourselves for this round. So, not gonna talk too much about this because eyes glaze over, uh, with, you know, acronyms like G O S M, goals, outcomes, strategies, and measures, or metrics. But this is how we're organizing ourselves this time around, to make sure that we are appropriately capturing what the community tells us in those goal statements, that we are being very specific about what we want those goals, what outcomes we want from those goals, and to think about what barriers are associated with that, what do we need to, what obstacles do we need to overcome, what are the opportunities for achieving those goals. We need to very clearly define strategies, and strategies are those projects, those policies, those plans, that's like the implementation of the, of the community vision. And then we need to track our success. What's working, what's not working, um, what do we need to do differently, um, we need to do a really good job of measures. And so we did an okay job last time, we wanna do a better job this time to make sure we are being far more diligent, make sure that we're being effective and efficient in our work. One more thing on this, goals and outcomes is a pretty high level, so the strategic vision will talk about goals and outcomes. The master plan is really where those strategies, those projects, those policy updates, those plans will live, um, and of course, how we measure them, um, and how we measure our work. Those are master plan items. Like last time, we are putting, uh, we're doing Imagine Kalamazoo in the engagement, the initial engagement process in three phases. Imagine it, plan it, and design it. We are currently in imagine it at the beginning, and, um, you'll see here how I've kind of set up, you know, activities in each related to that last slide. So imagine it is high level, we're gonna start to review the strategic vision goals, um, we're looking at the city vision statement, we're thinking high level, um, uh, we're doing a lot of small group conversations, we are popping up at meetings, we're doing a community read, which I'll talk about in a minute, um, to talk about those goals. This winter we'll move into the planet phase, where we're gonna do some large call-all meetings, we're gonna do some very specific focus group readings, take what we heard and imagine it, those goals, hopefully which will be well-defined, and start to pair them with outcomes. What do we wanna achieve with those goals? And then in the final phase, we're gonna do something very similar to what we did last time, which was, we call it the Neighborhood Roadshow, and so we'll be out in all the neighborhoods with, armed with, here's the community goals, here are the outcomes we're hoping to achieve, what does that mean here? Because we know that a, um, a goal, say, connected neighborhood, or complete neighborhood, means something a little, to get there means something a little bit different in all of our 22 neighborhoods, and so we wanna make sure that we're thinking about it at that block level, so we're setting up implementation to be successful. Oh, the timeline kinda faded away, but we are, again, um, this fall is imagine it, so that high level, and then we will pause, look at our data, make sure we can move on, uh, who did we hear from, what did we hear, and go to the planet phase, which we expect to be this winter. At that point, we'll pause briefly and kind of divide off staff's time, and some folks are gonna start to write the strategic vision document. The master plan folks, um, including myself, will move on to do the designer phase, that Neighborhood Roadshow, to really get that information that shapes the master plan, with the hope of, uh, having it out for public review late '25, early '26, and approval in early '26. So, we've already talked about that. So what are we doing in imagine it? Um, you know, I talked about popping up at places and meeting with different groups, um, the community book read. There are three main activities that we're doing in this phase. We are doing meetings on the go, uh, which is a kind of a do-it-yourself toolkit for you all and the rest of the community to have conversations, uh, with folks that we would never reach with our, um, meetings or online surveys. Uh, so this is an attempt to get as deep into the community as possible with some very simple tools and questions, and it's the activity that, um, Commissioner Curtis, uh, Commissioner Curtis is gonna lead us through in just a minute. We are, for the first time, doing a community book read that we are leading. The Kalamazoo Public Library is a fantastic book read every year. Um, we are kind of doing a second one, uh, this year, uh, the name of the book is Happy City by Charles Montgomery, and similar to the meetings on the go, we are trying to enable folks to read this book, um, and then share their thoughts back with us. And then we are going to do a deep dive into the strategic vision, which will include an online survey for those that, um, aren't able to get to other events. So, meeting on the go, again, it's a toolkit that's meant to support people, everyday people engaging others. So it's having conversations, um, we have a set of, um, uh, easy questions, we have it set up so you can do a 45-minute meeting, you can do a 10-minute meeting, if you only get through four questions, we tell you what we think the foremost important questions are, we have like, how would you invite someone if you wanted to send an invitation, like everything that you would need to know to set up that meeting with your neighbors, your knitting club, your running group, your coworkers, we have in this document, um, which we've been widely distributing, um, and, um, uh, again, we'll be doing tonight. The second activity, which again is new and we're super excited about it, is that we are reading the book Happy City by Charles Montgomery. So Happy City is a book that, um, makes us think about how, um, the world around us, the built environment around us, our social connections, um, how those impact our outlook on our community, uh, on our relationships, our level of happiness, and it's something that I don't think we necessarily automatically think about, how, you know, where we live, uh, travel to work or school or play, how that impacts us. Our ability for, to have those random make-your-day interactions with, you know, your neighbor that you see walking down the street, or when you're, you know, you pop out for lunch, you know, from the office, that you run into somebody, and how all of these interactions and this built environment actually shapes how we think of our world. And so that is, that is what the book, um, tries to get us to think about. So with this book, you, which is available at the library on all their platforms, um, it is available at a discount at This Is a Bookstore, um, it is, you know, if you like audible audiobooks, it's available on the major, uh, brands for audiobooks. Um, we are ourselves as a city hosting facilitated conversations, and we're encouraging book clubs around the city, or again, you and your neighbors, your coworkers, to read the book and have a conversation, and if reading the book feels like a lot, given your schedule and your time, there's a TED Talk, 18 minutes and change, that you can listen to and then have a conversation, uh, with folks, and again, we've made a little toolkit for you. Just like if any of you particular, participate in a book club, um, we have discussion questions and, you know, how you can submit, um, your discussion results back to us. Both the Meeting on the Go and Happy City Toolkit, you can write it on paper and take a picture of it and email it to us, you could scan it into us, um, and email it, you could drop it off, you can do it all on a Google form and just hit send at the end, and it's gonna be sent directly to us, so we're trying to give a variety of ways for folks to participate. I mentioned that we are leading as city staff, leading some conversations, and I should say that this work, um, is being led predominantly by a senior at Kalamazoo College, her name is Emerson Westerhoff, um, and she interned with us this summer and is working for us again this fall, helping to lead these conversations and organize the activities. For example, the library's also gonna do a parallel children's activity, um, they're thinking about an art project where kids have the opportunity to draw and imagine their happy city, and so Emerson is helping to coordinate those things. We held our first discussion on happy cities on Monday night at This Is a Bookstore, we had about two dozen people in the back, uh, of the bookstore, um, and had a great discussion on the book, it was really good. We have another event planned, uh, for October 23rd, uh, at Jericho, uh, which is on Fulford Street in the Edison neighborhood, um, we are asking people RSVP because the, these are smaller events, um, for book discussions, um, we are planning a December event in conjunction with the Kalamazoo Public Library that will likely be at the temporary Alma Powell location in the Northside neighborhood, and we'll be planning more events between now and probably March, when we wrap up the planet phase. Our goal is to get as many people to, um, read or view the video, um, and have a discussion. I just heard from, um, a downtown office, where they together collectively watched the 18-minute TED Talk, and then went through the discussion and had a great conversation, and are sharing their results with us. The strategic vision, goals, so we have 10 of them. We need to understand, in working with you all and the broader community, how do these goals need to shift and adjust, or get better defined, to carry us another 10 years? Is there anything we need to add, other things we need to combine? We are not starting from scratch with this process, Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 is building on all of the sex, successes of 2025, so then the question becomes, what needs to change to propel us forward? And so we'll be doing, um, conversations on the strategic vision goals, um, having folks help us prioritize, help us redefine, start to think about, um, you know, how they, how they are gonna move us forward, and we're gonna start with a survey, and that survey will be released this month. So, I guess for everyone watching, and as well as for you, you know, we can't do, Imagine Kalamazoo doesn't exist without everyone participating, you know, at that point it just becomes a staff plan, uh, with what we think should happen for the City of Kalamazoo. Um, so we are, again, call to action for the community to join us on this journey and do this work with us. We have meetings on the go, you can download them online, we'll be having, we'll distribute copies this week in, um, a number of public buildings and places. Read Happy City, watch the TED Talk, have conversations with those around you, um, and start to get thinking about where Kalamazoo should go over the next 10 years. And at every meeting, as well as on the website, we are asking people to either sign in or check in by using a QR code, so we can keep folks up to date. This is a long process, right? We're gonna be engaging through this time next year, at least, just to even get to writing of the master plan document. And so if you wanna be kept in the loop and understand, um, uh, when the next event is, you know, going to the city's website and, and clicking on Imagine Kalamazoo, uh, is gonna be your place to go. That is what I have. Um, so I am going to, oh, I'm gonna turn over to Commissioner Curtis, does anybody have any questions for me on Imagine Kalamazoo, strategic vision, master plan, any of our activities, where we're going?
Um, is there any consultant or the same consultant, what's the history of consultants on this project?
Sure, sure. Um, so with Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, we did not have a consultant, um, Rebecca Kick, who's now in the city manager's office, and I, um, led the process and wrote the documents. Then and now, we have used consultants to help us compile the data, so we're not, you know, writing what sticky notes said, uh, we have, we are working this time around with the Western Michigan University Innovation Center, and so it's students and faculty that are gonna help us go through everything we hear, all the data, compile it, organize it, pull out keywords to help us move forward. The new thing this year is Rebecca and I are leading it, Emerson's helping with the book club, um, we are looking to partner with, um, someone who does some local facilitation, because we're gonna do a series of focus groups, both in winter and spring, um, that are gonna be guided by our partners group, so we have a bunch of volunteers that serve on, uh, Imagine Kalamazoo Partners Group, and we've asked them to help lead discussions in a specific topic area. And so we're gonna have a facilitator, someone who does this for a living, help do some training, and help, um, set those conversations up for success. So that is, those are the roles of consultants that we are using currently.
When are we going to have all of the meeting on the goes done?
Sure, that's a great question. We would like meetings on the go to continue into November. Um, we will start to compile at the end of November, understand where we are, you know, have we heard from enough people? We had a little over 500 of these get turned back in from Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, um, and so we are hoping that it continues to be a popular activity. Um, you know, luckily, these timelines that we've set are mostly our own, right? So on the outside of that, October of 2027, technical expiration of the master plan, although I'm not sure the state has ever called anyone out on Aspired Master Plan, um, we will constantly be checking ourselves to see, did we hear from enough people in this phase to feel like we can move forward? Did we hear from enough people in all the neighborhoods, from different demographic groups? So, right now it is November, but, um, if we need to extend it, we will extend it. The book read, we want people to, we hope people to read through, through March, we know getting a book on a book club's queue might not be an instantaneous thing, we wanna give as many people possible the chance to read and discuss. And for you all, if you would like to host your own meeting on the go with your community, your office, um, I have extra copies, I can email it to you, you can download it from the, um, the city's website, so there are a variety of ways, um, for you to do it. Call to action, it doesn't happen without you.
Is the, uh, same Imagine Kalamazoo website, does it remain the clearinghouse for all this information?
Great question. Um, that site has been folded into the city's website, you can still access that information, but instead of going to ImagineKalamazoo.com, you are going to the City of Kalamazoo's webpage, so Kalamazoo City, um, and, or CityofKalamazoo.org, and from there you can get to the Imagine Kalamazoo page, which will have activities, you know, links to the book club, as well as Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 webpage, which is the clearinghouse of a lot of past events, plans, activities. Thank you for that question.
Anything else?
When we get the results of the feedback, are they segmented in any way by demographic, neighborhood, so on and so forth?
Some of it, yes. Not necessarily this, with each activity, we are asking people to provide us information. So if you host a meeting on the go, and you all live in the Edison neighborhood, we would know that you're from the Edison neighborhood. We are initially asking everybody for name, email, neighborhood, and then what we are doing from there is we will be sending out, probably starting a little bit later this month, anyone who has participated and given us their contact information, we're gonna be sending out a little bit of a longer demographic survey to get some additional information. And we know that when people come to meetings, they're not gonna stand there and fill out all, you know, five questions about themselves, so we're gonna follow up with a survey that gets into a little more information for some more of that demographic age range, um, race. Um, there's just a couple of questions we're gonna ask, you know, we don't need, we don't need everything, but we do wanna know that we're reaching the broader community, so we wanna make sure that we're getting some of that information. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Curtis, I will say that all of you have one copy, a full copy, of the toolkit at your, at your seat, and then we gave you, um, a s, just a second set of just the pages, just the worksheet, response sheet, so, um, please, uh, jot down your responses as you share them on the loose copy, that's, uh, which you'll leave at the dais for us to collect, um, and, uh, you guys can keep the clean meeting on the go copy in case you wanna run right out and do a meeting on the go on your own. Commissioner Curtis?
Thank you very much. Um, so yeah, we wanted to just take all of you through a somewhat shortened example of what a meeting on
of what a meeting on the go could look like. I had a lot of fun. I led one of these down at the Kalamazoo Farmers Market last Saturday. Just got a lot of feedback from passerby, whoever may be. And so this will be very much just a loose discussion. Something that we did talk about beforehand that we wanted to make clear to both everyone here and to anybody who they'd be watching at home is we are actively asking the members of the planning commission to give their personal opinions on things, which is a very unusual thing for us to do here. We've been actively told not to do that in the past, to put your biases aside and everything. So this is our disclaimer that these are the personal opinions of the individual citizens sitting on the Kalamazoo Planning Commission and not the board opinion of the planning commission as an entity. Just getting that out of the way so everybody knows and feels comfortable sharing things that may not say when there's someone up at the dais in front of us. With that, if you go through the normal list of what happens in a meeting on the go, there's a lot of like get to know you stuff, ground rules and stuff like that. Luckily, that's kind of all been covered by us sitting on the same board and commission and knowing each other's names already and going through the vetting process and everything. So I think we can skip mostly over that, but it is something to know and recognize and do if you were to lead one of these meetings on your own. Just getting to know your participants a little bit, welcomes and introductions. I'm just going to lead us through activities A and B on the front side of the worksheet. This is really like, like Christina said, very broad scope, 30,000-foot view when we're looking at the strategic goals that we, whenever we make a decision as the planning commission that we are referring back to, this is kind of reversing that process and now we are shaping those goals instead of those goals shaping our decisions. So looking towards the future of Kalamazoo, we start by looking at the past of Kalamazoo. In activity A, what has changed for the better in Kalamazoo in the last 10 years? And I'd welcome anyone to shout out, turn on your mic, whatever comes to your mind, but also make sure you jot it down and have a written response because I believe Christina does want to collect all these at the end and record our responses. So yeah, open up the floor to anybody. What has changed for the better in Kalamazoo in the last 10 years?
Just in the last year, so I haven't been here all 10 years, but recently, there's been a big reduction in gun violence. And I think that's from active groups working on that issue.
It's nice to see the focus on implementation and focused implementation rather than sometimes you see communities just sort of scattershot. You know, they're, oh, this year we're doing this, and this year we're doing this, and this year we're doing this. The fact that there was a plan and now, you know, there's clear focus on implementing the steps that are in the plan, it's been pretty enlightening to see.
Absolutely. So, and I wanted to echo that actually, one of the slides that I think was left off of the presentation that was given to us when we were first onboarded to the Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 team was a look back at 2025 and all the different goals and metrics that were set up for 2025 and what, they had a pie chart of what had been accomplished, what's currently in progress, what hasn't been started. And it was like 86% had already like been fully done and then like 13% was in progress and 1% had not been started. I was amazed when I saw that, that graphic. So yeah, just wanted to echo and second that point. Any other responses for things that have changed for the better in Kalamazoo the last 10 years?
I would say one of the things that I've also seen change is the neighborhood plans and seeing different neighborhood associations build up and having them bring the ideas of the changes that they want to see for those neighborhoods. That's been pretty nice to see.
Wonderful.
There's been some, I don't want to call it housing reform because that may be giving it too much strength. But you can see, like when you see some of the increased density in housing in the downtown and then even in some of the core neighborhoods around downtown, that just doesn't happen by accident. That happens, it starts with the master plan and then the zoning that happens on the back of that. And then that creates the tools that enable, you know, then you got to have developers and financing and all sorts of other things that have to fall into place. But it starts with some of the things that happened 10 years ago. So I think that was, it's been nice to see that and know that this was a small part of that.
And that very much speaks to our particular approach to this as the members of the planning commission and what our role can be in this and shaping the zoning code and stuff like that where we can't say, we're building a house right here. We can just say, a house is allowed to be built right here. And so like Greg was saying, that's the, bringing forth the opportunities for these problems to be solved is a lot of what our role ends up being. Anything else? With that, we'll move on to number two under activity A. What has continued to be a challenge in Kalamazoo the last 10 years or recently or just whatever comes to mind?
I'm just going to go ahead and say it, bike lanes continue to be a challenge. It's something that the city is getting used to. And then we're getting ready to go through another change in our roads that are about to be reconstructed. So bike lanes have definitely become a challenge. And street parking with the reconstruction that has happened downtown.
Also throughout there, like Greg mentioned, it's absolutely a work in progress, is housing. It's been a continual concern for the last 10 years and there's absolutely been movement forward. But it will, it appears to be a problem we will be contending with just as so many cities are contending with for the foreseeable future. So really, I think the main thing that has been progress made in the last 10 years is adjusting the approach and the framework and the mental attitude of like, oh, okay. It used to be like, oh, we may not, we may be able to push this down the road or ignore it as a problem. And very much in the last 10 years, I think the community attitude has shifted. It's like, no, that we need to address this now. And so it's come back to the implementation sort of thing going forward.
And I think with that, poverty and social justice issues sort of still seem to have a geographic home, sort of still tied to certain neighborhoods, certain parts of the city. And that just is something to keep working on.
Any other thoughts on some of the challenges facing the community and the city?
I feel that the public transit system still remains a challenge to use. The bus system, while it is fairly comprehensive as far as where it goes in the city, the frequency is really, really bad. I mean, for a city of Kalamazoo's size, it's decent. But I think that's a really big growth area for Kalamazoo. It is a fairly small city geographically and having more frequent, reliable transit would make it a lot more usable and attractive to people.
Would also have positive downstream effects with decreasing traffic. And we've been, there's been a lot of community meetings about the city streets and construction and everything. And so, you know, there's a lot that can be done to be alleviated through creating accessible bike lanes, like you were talking about, increasing public transportation. And when I actually hosted this meeting, someone that I talked to brought up an incredible point, which was that it's not just about, when it comes to bike lanes, having bike lanes and them being present in the downtown, but having a truly connected network. Because if there's a spot where you would have to get off or be on an uncomfortable road or be like, the willingness to take a route is dictated by like the weakest link. The place that you will have to bike through that is the hardest or least conducive to biking will be the thing that determines whether or not you take that as a valid method of transit, which was a very interesting point that I hadn't heard before and I really appreciate that insight. Anything else? All righty, we can move on to activity B. This is now looking more forward a little bit. So next 10 years or just generally in the future, describe what a happy and healthy city means to you. As was mentioned, the book we are reading is called Happy City. And it's very, I can attest that it's very much engaged in that way. I'll put out a big vouch for the book. It is very ambitious and at times very critical, but it has a air and a vibe of pure like enthusiasm and optimism to it, which is very intoxicating. I was so invigorated, even the first chapter I read of the book, I wanted to go out and shake hands with every neighbor I could immediately afterwards. So highly recommended that. So in that same vein, describe what a happy and healthy city means to you. All right, giving you a second to jot down your thoughts. Anything coming to mind for what a happy and healthy Kalamazoo would look like?
So I think it's a place where people feel safe walking and stopping to talk to neighbors and strangers, whether it's walking downtown or walking just around your neighborhood. Being able to be outside and enjoy that.
I would say a place where people want to live, not just where people want to drive into work.
That makes a lot of sense. On those same lines, I had written down having the ability and a reason to move through and exist in public spaces. Those two things go hand in hand for me where you got to have a reason, you have to have a destination, whether it's an event or something outside of work, home, whatever it may be. Have a reason to be there and a good way to get there. And if possible, a reason to stay around before and after the event or the place that you're going to happens.
One thing I think is just sort of a kind of good test too is that community members avoid littering. And so that means there's both the motivation to keep, keep it clean, but also that there's trash cans nearby or recycling nearby. So both the infrastructure and the will.
Absolutely. Any other thoughts?
I guess just to echo what kind of has already been said. I put, a happy and healthy city is a place where those who walk, bike, or use public transit have the same, are afforded the same dignity and ability as those who choose to use a motor vehicle to get around. And a place where amenities are close to your home.
Yeah, yep. Or like we've been talking about, feel close. Where there's a lot of times where you can be proximally close to something, but if it's all one-way roads and infrastructure that is hostile to walking towards, like it doesn't feel very close to you. And on the opposite way, if you have a very robust public transport system and I'm two miles out of town, but I can get there in 20 minutes, half an hour, that feels decently close to me. Perfect. Any other thoughts? Great. This is one that I think is really pertinent to us because a lot of people may not know much about our daily lives and we know a ton about each other's daily lives. This is made to be done more in a, more geographically centered location where it's like we all live in the same neighborhood if you're hosting a meeting like this. But at this, we have a more diverse set of perspectives on it. Is there something in your neighborhood that exemplifies the nature of a healthy and happy city? So when you think about where you live, where you work, the specific places that you engage with on a day-to-day basis where you kind of see those ideals coming to fruition?
8:30 AM every morning when people are walking to Winchell. And the parents are walking the kids and then the parents are walking back or, you know, the one parent is, and then you see them. Or you see a couple sets walking their kids and then walking back together and talking. And that, that's why we moved there. I think that's the... And I'm not, hopefully that's not unique to there. That's just the only place I'm typically at 8:30. I'm not typically in other people's backyards at 8:30 AM.
Perfect.
Also, in Winchell, I would point to the asylum preserve as like a green walkable space.
Thank you. Same neighborhood, but the ability to walk to the little commercial center where like the ice cream store and the bookstore and seeing families, individuals, older folks, younger folks, all being able to access sidewalks, bike lanes, and make that a place that feels very accessible and easy to get to without having to get into a car.
I would say for me, I live over by Spring Valley Park. So what I like is in the summer when they have like the disc golf tournaments, then you're seeing people come over. We've had movie nights over there. And the park is very walkable, nice to take pictures at or just kind of relax. It's a really nice park. And everything in our neighborhood is kind of, it pretty much is walkable. And then we sit in between parchment and Kalamazoo Township. So it's a nice mix between the both of us.
Absolutely. Personally, I really enjoy, there's a, I'm in the southwest niche neighborhood and there's a church kind of nestled in between three different, very distinct neighborhoods. And the church has a very small but well-maintained playground. And they have signs over it everywhere that are saying, neighborhood playground open to all. Anyone can use anytime. Like they're very open about it. And it's also the same church that acts as a polling location during elections and how it's going there. Like I feel like it's a very like central and engaged location and community within the larger community. And they seem very aware of that and do a really good job facilitating a sense of community.
I'm in the West Douglas neighborhood. And last year, my kid took the bus to get to school and we called the Ada Diltz Park. We turned it into the Bus Stop Park. And so that's what we call it now. And it's a great spot to get your energies out before having to sit on the bus for a little bit.
I'm in the Millwood neighborhood. And to me, that one is, I'm going to show my age a little bit here, a little Leave It To Beaver kind of neighborhood. It's quiet. We've got Millam Park right there. We've got Millwood Elementary. It's quiet, we've got Millen Park right there, we've got Noah Elementary and Lloyd Norx right there, so there's always things going on in the neighborhood. It's just a great, quiet place to live within a bustling city, so it's good.
Great. I think we've heard from just about everyone on that one. Everybody likes the neighborhood, that's good to hear. Let's keep that energy moving forward. Last question here in Activity B is, what needs to stay and do or be built upon for Kalamazoo to be the happy and healthy city that you described? So, both the things that you have within your own neighborhood that you enjoy, and the things that are more of the lofty goals that we talked about in Question 1. What needs to stay the same? What needs to change in order to achieve those goals?
I think the kind of inclusivity to all that we're, we hear a lot around here. It's the making sure that people with mobility challenges can get around the city, just like anybody else. Making sure that there are bike lanes, although they're contentious around here. I think they are needed in the city. Maybe just a little bit different planning for them, but I just think as long as we keep it inclusive, so everybody feels like they have their spot in the city, or that they can get around the city to whatever they need to go to.
For me, all summer, my mantra has been, "The streets will be better when this is done." And so, I'm really looking forward to reconstruction on the roads getting finished.
Something I love about Kalamazoo, and I mean cities more broadly, but Kalamazoo does a good job at it, is that Kalamazoo, each neighborhood, I feel, has a fairly distinct, like, commercial district or a commercial area. Like, in the Vine neighborhood where I'm at, there's the corner of Vine and Westnedge, where you have, like, martinis and all those other restaurants. And I think that that is something that Kalamazoo should lean more into moving forward, is having those small commercial pockets that are within neighborhoods, like, in residential areas, but, you know, draw people from that neighborhood to come to it. I think those are really, really valuable.
Something that immediately came to my mind after the previous question that we had discussed is just connection. Like, we heard from so many different people, all these different little, like, microcosms of happy, healthy cities and communities, and what makes us feel engaged and thriving in a city. And I was like, "Oh, I didn't know that existed. I didn't know that happened. I didn't know that was there, and now I do, and like, I want to get out and see these things, and I'll do these places." But like, the, like, it's great to have these very local things, but it's also good to get the word out and to have both the, like, physical connections through infrastructure and transportation, but also the community connections of getting place to place and talking to people and knowing what's going on in the city around you to feel not just part of your neighborhood, but as part of the city as a community as a larger whole. Anything else on moving Kalamazoo towards being a happier, healthier city? Alright. Take a glance at the back of the worksheet, Activities C and D, we won't go through them here, but they are good things to ruminate on. If you have thoughts, feel free to jot them down. I'm sure city staff would be happy to take your feedback. It's a lot more of, like, actionable things, like, what's, how do we achieve these stuff that we were talking about? What barriers and challenges are in the way that we need to get rid of or just be aware of as we move forward? And then what role do we as community members have in it? And what sort of, like, institutions can we involve to be able to get Kalamazoo towards the best possible future? One thing that I did want to bring up that isn't on this worksheet specifically, but is part of the packet for leading a meeting on the go, is Activity E, which is a great question that is kind of posed at the end of every meeting, which is, "Who else do we need to talk to?" That's been something that staff has been great about. We hear it at the end of every meeting, and we're trying to get more and more and more people involved in this process than was in the previous master plan, than is every year going forward. So, whether you have specific examples you want to shout out right now, or jot them down, or reach out to city staff individually, we're always looking for more ways to get to hear from more people, whether it's certain places that people gather at, that we could be at to talk to them, or just certain people that you know, "Hey, I talked to this person the other day who had this problem," but they're not gonna come to a city meeting. They're not gonna be at a public hearing for any reason. Just to keep that in mind, because it's great to hear the voices that are here, but it is just as important to get voices that aren't here to be heard. So, yeah, that's kind of the general layout of a meeting, although very low-key, you can do this with anyone, anywhere, and it'll, it's all good data. It'll all be fed back in to help inform the strategic vision that, hey, we sit here every month, and we hear an applicant come forward, and the question we are asked is, "Does it align with the strategic vision?" And we go through those 10 points and see what does it align with what to, like, this is literally our job as planning commission members, is to respond to the strategic vision, and this is the opportunity to get yourselves and people you know to help shape the strategic vision going forward. So, highly recommend participating in it.
Thank you, everybody. I would also say that for those of you who might want to have this conversation, say, in your office, while not everyone lives in the city of Kalamazoo, that's fine, right? We are popping up all over the city, because we want to make sure we're getting people who live, work, and play in Kalamazoo, to make sure that we're shaping it for everyone. So, don't shy away, because someone doesn't necessarily live in the city if they work here, if they visit regularly. All opinions are our fair game. The one other thing that I have at the end of today's planning report, I guess I have two, I have two things. Michigan Avenue, we have kicked off the redesign process, switching gears. We have, thank you Commissioner Curtis, that was lovely. We have kicked off the engagement process for Michigan Avenue. And I was trying to bring it up on the website, so I could display it, and it wasn't, it's not cooperating. So, Michigan Avenue, we are starting the public process to get to the design for Michigan Avenue. We did the same thing two years ago with Kalamazoo Avenue, and construction on West Kalamazoo Avenue, meaning Westnedge to Douglas in the Stewart neighborhood, as well as Douglas on the other side of the Stewart neighborhood, and West Main starts next year. So, these are two-year kind of processes to get to the point where we can start construction. We do a lengthy engagement process, the engineers go and do design work, and then we go out again for more engagement, we make changes, then we bid the document. And all of this work is being federally funded through the infrastructure bill, so there's a process involved in that to get projects off the ground as well, so that's why it is typically about a two-year lead time. So, we are kicking off Michigan Avenue design for a project that will start in '27, and be a '27, probably '28 construction, because it'll be a two-year project. We have a number of events and opportunities for people to give us feedback on the Michigan Avenue design. There are, first of all, there's a series of four in-person meetings. There was one in September, there was one a week from tonight, Thursday, the, I'm blanking, 10th, that's what I thought. Great, Thursday the 10th. That meeting's in the Crawlspace Theater location within Canac, so the big old former white church on Michigan Avenue on the ground floor. The meeting will be there. It's set up so you can come at one or two times. You can come either at 5:00 PM, participate for an hour, and then head out to a restaurant or shop downtown, or you could do that first, and then head over to us about 6:30 and participate with us for an hour, short presentation, and then a little bit of a hands-on workshop. There'll be another meeting in November, also at Canac, and in December. And each one of these meetings are building on the month before Activity and Input. So, also in September, we did a number of small group meetings, talking with, like, delivery truck companies that do deliveries, both food and for commercial goods downtown, working with downtown businesses. We attended Sounds of the Zoo this weekend. We had a table, we had over 100 people stop by our table at Sounds of the Zoo to help us think about what, we gave everybody five Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo cash, five $10 bills to invest in specific ideas for the corridor, and you can only pick five, and there were 15 options. And so, we had kids, seniors, everyone in between, help us think about what those priorities are. We had a meeting today with downtown retail shops. We are doing a walking audit, or a walk and roll, so however you move through town, on Friday the 18th, we are doing two of those. We're meeting, I believe, at 9:00 AM at Sarkozy's and going for a walk on Michigan Avenue, and then we're meeting again later in the day, I think it's 3:30, at Green Top. And we'll, that will be our jumping off point for another walk and roll through Michigan Avenue, where we'll be selecting, or soliciting feedback and getting ideas for the corridor. And because it's Halloween month, I believe Sharon Ferraro is gonna be joining us with some historic and, you know, in some cases slightly spooky history of Kalamazoo, so a fun activity to come out to. And again, those four meetings. For those that are unable to participate in those meetings, we released an online survey this week for the opportunity to give feedback that way. We always want to make sure we're giving a lot of components. I know it's a lot of surveys, but we always want to make sure that that virtual option is available for, for folks that can't always come or want to participate in another way. So, that is out there. In terms of street construction, there's going to be a lot of news coming out over the next month of projects wrapping up. I will only steal the thunder of one, and that is Mishkell, because Mishkell, that little street that goes between Walgreens, Up and Under t-shirt shop at, at the corner of Michigan, up to Kalamazoo Avenue, that street closed in June, construction had to end by November 1st, it will be open next week, October 8th. Now, it was part of the Streets Fall Project, it is part of, it's a street that is going to be two-way someday. It will not be two-way yet, because this is a network activity. And so, we can't just make Mishkell two-way without changing the intersection at Westnedge and Kalamazoo, and changing the intersection at Michigan and West Main. So, it is reconstructed, there's an awesome wide mixed-use path, which is, was a missing link to get between the universities, actually, all the way to Rambling Road now, all the way up to where the KRBT trail, or the Cal Haven Trail, KRBT, going to the Cal Haven Trail is at Westnedge and Kalamazoo. So, we have that last missing link. I think there were over 40 trees planted along the side of the trail and the street, so pretty exciting. But when it opens, it will remain one-way until we can get a little more network stuff, and then when it's ready, all we have to do is restripe it, and it'll be ready to go. So, projects are wrapping up, things will be, you know, better when they are done, because the infrastructure will be better, right? You know, a lot of these projects were overhauling underground infrastructure that has not been touched in many, many, many decades. And those projects do take a lot of time and work, and there's a lot of coordination between water and stormwater and sanitary sewer work that happens underground. I know what we see above ground is a fraction of the work that these projects actually undertake, which is just that surface work. So, Mishkell, October 8th next week, which is pretty exciting and a bit ahead of schedule. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Public comments, is there any, I think there's anyone here, so we don't have to give a moment for anyone who's online watching that would like to call in for anything not on the agenda. Phone number again, 888-382-9556.
There are no callers.
No callers, alright. Then we will close the public comment section and turn it over to Commissioner Cradle.
Hey, good evening, everyone. It's nice to hear everyone kind of dialogue on the Imagine Kalamazoo exercise tonight, so thanks for your work on that. Just really have two really simple things that I was hoping to cover with everyone. First of all was road project conversation, and just to thank the public, all of you, for your patience this season. It's been a really challenging season to get around, and we recognize that, but hopefully the juice will be worth the squeeze. You know, one of the beauties of the work that we're doing is we're being very intentional about the future, and you heard Christina talk a little bit about that. But rather than just being like a lot of communities and just paving over the top and being done relatively quickly on a lot of our major streets, we're digging up the guts, and we're going deep in there to make sure that for decades to come, we don't have to do that again. And not only that, we're making sure that we have the best and the safest infrastructure that we have for people as well. And so, you know, that does take a lot more time, but hopefully we don't have situations where we entirely repave a street, go a couple months, then have a water main break, and then have to dig it all up again. And that was a real reality up until even, you know, not so long ago. So, we're really trying to change that narrative and make sure that our infrastructure can last for, for a very long time. So, thank you, everybody, for your patience. And along that vein, there are a number of our beloved businesses that depend on us to go out of our way to help sustain them and stay alive. I had about an hour-long, hour-and-a-half-long meeting at Midtown Fresh earlier this week with a number of our retailers, a number of them from ice cream to paint stores to our few grocery stores that we have in the city of Kalamazoo. They need us. They need us to step up, they need us to go out of our way. I know it lights at the end of the tunnel, but when things resume and you start, you know, going on those roadways again on a regular basis, please do your best to try to pull off and, you know, grab your six-pack on the way home, or grab your, you know, things for dinner, or pick up dinner from them and support them as much as you can, because they really need us, they really do. And, you know, these are people who are not exorbitant wealthy people in many cases, people who live in this community, who are supporting this community, and, you know, they, they have really worked hard to try to survive the last few months of construction season. So, please, if there's a homework assignment for all of us and everybody who's tuned in, please support our local businesses as much as you can here in the remaining months and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Planning Commissioner comments. Any Planning Commissioners with comments? No? No? Well, thank you, Commissioner Curtis, for your work today. Thanks, everybody, for your participation in the exercise. Encourage everyone to continue doing so in this important work that we have before us. And, don't forget to vote, right?
Vouch her out if you have voted absentee, and you can get them from the city clerk's office Monday through Friday.
Excellent. Alright, with that, and our agenda cleared, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.